Twenty twenty. And begin by introducing our members that are with us this evening. So my far right is an alternate, Peter Steckler, excuse me. And he will be acting as an alternate. To his right is Robin Tyner, also an alternate this evening. Then Gwen English is next. And she's a regular member. Then our selectmen's representative Nico Apokontis is with us. And our clerk, Pete Cameron. I'm Langton Plummer, Chair of the Board. And to my left is Kelly Bergeron. And we are pleased to see Kelly with us again. Next to Kelly is John Gerter and Jen Martell. So I'm going to ask Jen Chi as an alternate. I'm going to ask her to act this evening. And then keeping on my further left, our Town Planner, Dave Sharple's, and our Recording Secretary, Daniel Holger, is with us this evening. First thing we need to do is to pass that over. I have an announcement that the IS Realty Trust 100 Linden Street, case number nineteen dash thirteen, is being rescheduled, as would like to be rescheduled, for January twenty-third. That's our next meeting, twenty twenty. But in order to do that, I need a motion to continue.
I will so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Move and seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Before we do, just make it clear, January twenty-third meeting, twenty twenty, at seven P M.
At seven P M.
Sorry.
Yes, thank you. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Then we will go to our public hearing on proposed zoning amendments for twenty twenty town meeting warrant. And copies of those are available. The text is available in the planning office.
I also have copies here.
I'll turn it over to Dave to just review that.
Thank you.
Go ahead. This is our first public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
And maybe the only one. You can have a second one or continue the hearing until the twenty-third. You have until the twenty-seventh to finalize the warrant. The, this is a culmination, the mixed-use neighborhood development ordinance is a culmination, started about, a project that started, I don't know, maybe a little over a year ago. Municipal technical assistance grant became available through the U N H. Plan, well, U N H funded it through Plan New Hampshire. Plan New Hampshire, I'm sorry. Anyway, they, they said, the criteria to apply for the grant was to create an ordinance that would incentivize affordable housing. Our two thousand seventeen housing report done by our Housing Advisory Committee recommended looking for ways to, you know, create affordable housing in Exeter. So using that, I applied for, with that goal in mind, I applied for the grant. We received it. It was twenty-five thousand dollars. And we sent an RFP. We, we got several responses. We interviewed firms and we hired Horsley Witten Group, who started working on the draft. And the National Plan Oversight Committee worked on it for many months and culminated to presentation by the Horsley Witten Group in front of this planning board on December seventh, really describing the proposal in detail and showing where it is. I wasn't going to repeat that presentation, but there are a couple people here, so I'll, I'll go over the, the basics of the amendment. So what was created is a mixed-use neighborhood development. It only applies in the C one and the W C district. The C one district, there's a zoning map up there. I can go up there and show it. But basically, it's the downtown area from, and Portsmouth Ave. Starts on Walgreens on Portsmouth Ave and the lights. Comes down Portsmouth Ave and then Water Street down to the P A Boathouse, essentially, the next parcel there where their municipal lot, the old D T C building. And we're in it too. And it just basically goes up to the rec building at Court Street. So the downtown area, W C on the water, which is a linear district right on the, right on the Swambskirt River, from Great Bridge to the P A Boathouse. That's the W C. So that's, it's a small area. And the C one is on Lincoln Street too. Includes the Lincoln Street train station and that commercial district along Front Street, right by the railroad tracks on either side. So that's where it applies and where it only applies. So what it does is it gives an option for property owners. If they want to develop their property, this is optional. They don't have to. They're not required to go under it. They can go under conventional zoning or they can take advantage of the mixed-use neighborhood development. If they take advantage of them, I'll just call it the MUN from now on. If they take advantage of the MUN, they have to meet more stringent criteria than the zoning ordinance, which includes higher architectural standards, a form-based code. They really have to take in the pedestrian environment and high, like, high-quality urban design. And they have to provide at least ten percent of their residential units that create have to be affordable in perpetuity through a deed restriction, depending on the ownership, whether it's condominium or rentals. So that, they have to be provided affordable housing. So why would they do that if it's, if they're stricters? Well, the incentives to do it is the density in the district in the W C is seven hundred and fifty square feet per unit and thirty-two hundred square feet in the C one. Those are removed. The density is no longer a limiting factor. And so that's, but there's three limiting factors, density, parking, and height. So, you know, you can have all the density, but if you can only still go up three stories, you're limited. Your density is limited because you can only go up three stories. So they, in this proposal, in the downtown portion of the C one, out on, and on, you know, and the W C, the height goes from thirty-five to fifty feet. So it allows an additional story, essentially, instead of three stories, you can build four stories in there. The height in the Lincoln Street area, C one, remains the same as it is now, thirty-five feet. So that, that is not being increased in the Lincoln Street area. Also, parking, instead of, right now, we have parking requirements of one space per unit if it's a studio or one bedroom, but goes to two spaces if it's more than a one-bedroom, if it's a two-bedroom or more. That has been removed. We only require now one space per residential unit and allows flexibility for the planning board to reduce that if the property owner can prove that there's additional off-site nearby parking available that's safe and accessible. So that, we get, what, what the idea is, people will hopefully take advantage of it. They'll take advantage of it and we get high-quality urban design, affordable housing, and give them a flexibility in the downtown area to put an extra story, to get additional units, and, and reduced parking requirements. So that's kind of, you know, it in a nutshell. So I'd be happy to, you know, if anyone in the public has any questions on it, I'd be happy to answer it.
Will the board have any discussion first? We've discussed it fairly thoroughly, so anybody...
Dave?
Yes.
Did I understand that this was going to go to Town Council to review?
Well, once it goes to, voted to the warrant, I don't do it until this board votes to place it on the warrant. So if it's voted to place on the warrant, then I know it's going forward and we have council review it at that point.
It's not going to Town Council yet.
It has not.
Okay.
Anyone in the public like to speak to that? If you would, please step to the podium and introduce yourself so our viewers at home and we will know who's speaking.
My name's Andrew Rockwell. I've owned property and lived next door for thirty years. And specifically, my property is on Lincoln Street. I own two buildings with a large, about an acre and a half of land there. And the reason why I made the decision thirty years ago to invest in Exeter is primarily because of the train. Bob Hall thirty years ago came here and begged you guys to give him money to do the train. At that point, it was a very unpopular thing to do. In fact, the chairman of the board said, "It's a waste of time and money, Bob. Nobody's going to ride the train." It was, long story short, obviously, twenty-five, thirty years later, after Bob started all this, we're here today. And this is sort of like a culmination of everything and Lincoln Street. And I guess the way I view it too is, like, we're kind of here to make the quality of life for our future generations better than the one that we have. And without impacting the environment the most, that's, I think, what a planning board should be doing. And I guess what I have a hard time understanding is, is that the way the current zoning is structured is that you have fifty feet in the downtown area and way out on Portsmouth Ave. Public transit and transportation-oriented design, which is probably one of the most fundamental things that's being applied to communities today, is not being applied in this community. And I think when you start looking at what's happening, and I just want to show you this real quick, just because this is going to show you. This is Florida's, I'll just show you here. What it's talking about is you want to create like a layer cake of a, of design, meaning that typically around the train station, you have a bell-shaped curve where you have, you know, a little more density because people want to be next to the train. You don't want to have single-use occupancy vehicles coming from other sections of the town to the train because essentially what you've done is you've just added more congestion, hurt the environment. You're not adding more people to public transit. Half of the transit equation is public transit. So I guess I'm here to say that there seems to be a little bit of an inequity between what most communities do and what Exeter's doing. In fact, I'm happy to give you more of these, but I've researched practically every community that does have a train. Exeter will be the only train station that has less density around the train versus other places in the community. So I just think that that's something that we should consider that seems a little abnormal to town planning, to helping the environment. I guess in general, what we're talking about is a bell-shaped curve like this. Exeter's curve is really the inverse curve because we have less transit around. And I guess all I'm asking here today is that I'm hoping that you would consider maybe keeping the zoning equal. I'm not asking for any more. I just think that it seems a little bit odd that Exeter, next to the public transportation, and twenty, thirty years from now, you might want to consider how that might, area might look and how, if you don't do extra density, what opportunities could be lost. And I guess what I'm here to say too is, this is a, once these properties are developed, this is a one-shot deal. It's not like a highway where you can add a lane. You can't go back and change this because once these properties are constructed and deeded, that's it. A million people are going by Exeter every day or every year, looking at the town of Exeter from the tracks. And most places on every M B T A, you know, commuter line outside of Boston, guess what? They have nice big, they have more housing against the tracks. I'm just saying is, is that at this point, it seems a little odd that Exeter isn't doing it. And I guess a couple things that I'd just like to bring up is, there is precedent set, meaning that, I mean, I know this is unfamiliar because here in New Hampshire, Exeter's one of three towns that is only ever going to have train service. You guys don't have any peers in order to talk to and say, "Hey, what are you guys doing?" You know, when you talk about recycling, landfill use, you know, how are you going to commercial zone? You've got peers that you can talk to and talk about this. So I feel that you don't have enough, maybe, peers to support you. And I think that it's hard to make a decision on something like that, this, that is so dramatic. And I think there's precedence. If you look at how green a space P E A is, they have fifty-foot buildings for their housing on their campus so that they can maintain the green space. They actually have a really good model of what a community should be like. And it's a beautiful community because they have the dorms that are fifty feet. They put all their athletic facilities and their big, huge buildings by the water, kind of similar to putting it by the tracks. You go through that campus and, you know, the Khan Library, probably one of the most controversial buildings ever constructed in Exeter, right? It's a hundred feet high. Everybody thought it was going to be a disaster. It's the only internationally recognized building here from New Exeter. And what they did is, is instead of having dispersed, huge, flat library, what they did is they went up and they maintained the green space so that when you walk around, it's a lot more beautiful. So there is sort of precedent. You got the big, huge building on Front Street that's like sixty-five or, you know, the apartments, I think it was an old mill. So you already have town, you know, your predecessors already voted on putting higher buildings next to the railroad tracks. This isn't something new. They did it a hundred and fifty years ago. I guess the other side of it is, you know, the environment. You know, how many, how many acres do you have to mow down of trees for ten houses versus adding ten houses next to the railroad tracks? What's the environmental impact on that? I mean, you guys, I'm sure, I, I don't follow this board. This is the first time I've been here in thirty years. This is important to me. And it, it's just one of those things where I'm sure you guys go back and forth with people about developments in Exeter and how much trees and land they go through, where this could all be, you could create the inventory. The whole thing is based on affordable housing. He's saying, "Look, we need more affordable housing. This is a great place to put it." And I, I think the environmental impact is pretty easy to understand. And I guess the other thing too is, you know, you guys have tremendous control over this process. You guys have said you want three-D renderings to the max. You want, what, I think you said trees every forty feet. You want maintaining the edge. You want, let's see what some of the other notes that I had. So I guess what I'm saying is, is there's tremendous controls over what's happening here. It's not like you guys are going to get some sort of development that's a surprise. And I just want to look at my notes, make sure I haven't forgotten anything. The other thing too is, when, when you have housing like next to the railroad tracks, obviously, people aren't going to have yards, right? These people are, this is going to be a generalization and you can probably put holes in it, but these people are probably more likely to live outside their home, right? These are people that, you know, aren't going to be mowing their lawn or raking their roofs. But these are people that are probably going to want, you know, town amenities like public spaces, parks. I'm surprised like people here that support the I O C A aren't here. These are the people that you need to create the density and the people in order to create the demand. You have the supply, it exists, but it hasn't done anything because there's not enough people to support it. When you increase the density for the downtown, Portsmouth Ave, Exeter, Lincoln Street really has the greatest opportunity to create the density. And it would be a shame for all those people that do want to come to a community and be environmentally conscious, have less of a car, decrease their vehicle use, support the farm-to-table at the farmer's market, be able to walk there, have a walkable community. So I guess then the last thing, I think the thirty-five-foot height really is, I think, evolved really out of like a change of character on Lincoln Street. I own a couple of buildings. I'm, I've never really felt that there's any architectural detail or interest on Lincoln Street. I hate to say this, but it might be the ugliest collection of buildings in the town. And I own them, some of them. And I think, I think with the strict architectural details that you guys are going to have for this and the environmental impact, the type of people, the elderly that may not want to use a car anymore but don't want to go to River Woods or out to Ray Farm in a fifty-five, age-restricted, why don't we make something that's like age-appropriate so that, you know, these people can live in the town, have a place, don't have to have a car? You've got bus, train, taxi, app ride services, all servicing it there. I'm there every day. They're there in and out. You already have a potential intermodal transportation center. And I guess what I'm saying is, is like, I don't, I'm not expecting any more, but I think if you apply the same logic that the planning board, whoever group, applied to the W C district, I just would like the same application to maybe Lincoln Street. And I think what I'm talking about is that in the W C district, if you get into the nitty-gritty, I went through the MUN very carefully, is that they don't want any new construction within twenty-five feet of the road. That makes sense, right? It's a nice historical place. Nobody wants to see new construction in the W C or in the downtown affecting the, you know, the beautiful downtown area. That makes total sense. And so you put the newer construction that's fifty feet, fifty feet back, guess what? If you're on the road and you got twenty-five feet of, of, of current, nice architecturally-spect, beautiful buildings, you really can't see the fifty feet beyond that. That's probably the logic. And so what I'm saying is, is look, on Lincoln Street, I'm not sure what character people are talking about. I think the character is more the mix of the stores. You've got food service, you've got RJs, you've got dry cleaning. You essentially have the beginnings of all the small services that a town needs, that serves actually the town people. Why not put the people there to, to support those services? And I think all I'm asking is, is maybe use the same logic again that you used in the W C. Do twenty-five or thirty-five-foot setback off Lincoln Street, off the residential communities. And no, nobody's going to, you're not going to see any character altered because you're not altering anything. You're just being smart and saying, "Hey, we're going to put the, 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 the more density next to the railroad tracks." I mean, that's all I'm saying is, just like P E A put their big, huge athletic buildings and all their huge things, let's put it next to the railroad tracks. You know, it, it, it's not going to affect the character. There's no downside. No downside. Economically, environmentally, you attract people that want to live in the town, that may want to be carless, may want to support the, the local I O C A to whatever, you know, all up and down. I mean, I just, I, I, I hate to say this, but it seems like the thirty years ago, you left Lincoln Street for dead and it just seems like we're being left for dead again. I'm sorry, that's just the way it feels. You know, and we've owned businesses over there. I mean, through two thousand and eight, we're very lucky that Burnham, myself, Dan Jackson, and Lori Guple. I mean, we all made it through a terrible time in the economy. I mean, there's stable people and stable businesses there. We're lucky that we have just those people to begin with and those, and Casey has invested in Lexi's. You have the makings of an incredible place. And even in the spec, it says you want really good urban quality architectural design. Well, you gotta, you gotta have height to get the urban. You gotta put people next to the transit to make it public transit. It, it, I, I'd much rather see more people, I guess, next to the train station than I would clearcutting another thirty or forty acres for another twenty, thirty homes. It just seems completely rational. I, I think, I think what you did in the W C district is a very viable, clean option. You've already thought about that application before. Just why not apply to the Lincoln Street area? And the other thing too is, if it's the character, what's also important to realize is that if you're really about maintaining that two-hundred yards of storefront and everything...
You gotta take the mic. You gotta take the mic if you're going to walk over there.
It'll go with you.
No problem.
It's okay.
Never done this before.
That's all right.
This is a one-off.
One-on-one.
So, you know, Lincoln Street, the, the ordinance is to maintain potentially the character of Lincoln Street, which is maybe that two-hundred-yard section there. Again, I don't understand the character. I think it's more the storefronts and, and the people that are there that have made that area viable. But the idea here is that that whole ordinance, if you take it all the way down to Front Street and back around up Railroad Ave and Winter Street, which also fronts the C one district, Prescott and Dave Cowie's place, right? Essentially, you're limiting all those other people that go all the way around based on the character of two-hundred yards. So that two-hundred yards is basically eliminating all the potential development that probably isn't really going to be part of the character preservation anyway. So it, and I think if you do just the twenty-five or thirty feet, you've, you've made everybody happy. There's no downside. Everybody, you, you maintain the character of what you want to do and, and you've got people living there. You've, you've, if the whole thing is about being affordable housing, how much easier is it for you to create affordable housing in that area with a, a little bit, one story? I mean, literally, we're talking the distance of what we're looking at here. Is that really going to alter, next to the railroad tracks, the character of Lincoln Street? To me, really, that doesn't seem like it's that monumental. And I, I really think that Exeter is going to, you know, possibly regret the fact that they didn't make a further step forward. And I'm not asking for any more. In fact, with the thirty-five setback, I'm actually a little bit less where, you know, on a national level, every other town has actually increased the amount of people living next to the transit. So I guess that's all I have to say. I'm sorry if I got a little long-winded or anything, but I'm sorry. It's my first third time here in thirty years, so.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Please, step to the microphone. You know the rhythm here. We need your name, please.
Eileen Fluckhart, Seven Jack's Court. I read through the, this whole zoning amendment and I was really struck by some detail and some encouraging design accents that really were taken into, into consideration with regard to the actual look of things, the fact that we're talking about landscaping and trees, and that's my... and trees and that's my thing, but, um, the thing that struck me after reading through all of this in terms of design and everything else is that nowhere does it really mention that we really want to require green design or sustainable, however you're going to build everything, that it's really not only environmentally intelligent, but it conserves energy. Maybe you want to look at solar panels as part of a requirement for what you're doing. Because if you're in the process of creating something new or expanding something that's been there, it's kind of the perfect time to do it. And, um, if you think ahead to that and say, okay, we've now created a green building, a sustainable building, then the cost for people living there becomes much more affordable and sustainable for the years ahead. So that, um, that was my thought, because there were a lot of other wonderful things in here. And I think when we look at workforce housing and you want to create workforce housing, that people, you have somebody who wants to walk to work and works at Water Street Bookstore and can afford to live in one of those neighborhoods. And you've created a space that protects and conserves energy for them, then it's a win-win. And, and I think that might be something, I don't know whether it's something you can specifically add, um, but that was my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other thoughts or comments? I think partly what we're looking at is what you described, but I think too that some of our concern is it's compatible with what's there. And the height of the building, I don't know, there's all kinds of buildings on Lincoln Street. I'm not sure how big the Hank Hankertif Chamber building is.
Over 35.
Yep.
So there's, there's already precedent set in the, the 65-foot or 70-foot building down on Front Street, um, near the railroad tracks as well, and also the building across the, across the tracks from them, that's sort of the house of the architectural salvage or something like that. If you look at that building itself, that building is also over the 35-foot limit. So, you know, it's already happened. I, I don't feel to, to separate the, the, do I need to be up there?
Well, you should use a mic.
Please. Again, you know, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. And I think, you know, the green aspect of this is, I think would be an absolutely fantastic addition to it, but fundamentally, just in terms of carbon footprint, you could recycle and change everywhere vegan and have no idling in the town. There's, it, it's, it's not even in the same multitude or multiple of just getting cars off the road. Um, the, the, the most politically unsavvy thing in the world to do is actually not have children, but, but that's culturally not going to happen. So, but that's the biggest way to save on carbon footprint is to have less children. Obviously, that's socially completely unacceptable, but what is acceptable is, you know, not cutting down trees. Let's put more people next to the thing and, and do the green thing. I mean, actually, there could be a leader in the green thing for the state of New Hampshire. The only town that's going to have an intermodal bus, intermodal transportation center in the entire state, the only reason why we have it is because Maine pays for it.
Yes.
This has nothing to do with.
New Hampshire.
New Hampshire has nothing to do with. In fact, they pay millions and millions of dollars a year to subsidize the trains so that we have access to it. I mean, it's, it's like, can you spend billions of dollars extending their rail lines? We were given the opportunity. I just don't want to see us blow the opportunity. And again, we're not building for the current people now that may not like the altered character change. And I think the character is going to change regardless of what development is. I'm not sure an extra story next to the railroad tracks is going to change that. And I think you, we want to look at how people are going to view Exeter in the future and the type of people that we want to attract and the vibrant community that something like that develops and supports. So again, it's the same thing, I'm sorry.
I, I just think, and I'm sorry, sorry, I missed your name.
My name is Andrew.
Andrew. I, I think you both make, Andrew and Eileen, some excellent points. And I guess one thought I've had in, in doing these, and I, I also sit on the sustainability committee and I missed the last meeting. But maybe this type of thing is the thing that we should be bouncing off the sustainability committee so that these discussions, like if you brought it up there, and other committees that might have some inputs, you know, I don't know if conservation or someone else would, but could put all those inputs into it before we got it to the planning board. And it's not too late because we haven't made a decision, although I understand there's deadlines with the warrant. Um, but, I mean, just as a thought, I would think this is, that would be appropriate for sustainability to take that into consideration. Luckily, Dave is also the sustainability officer now, so maybe we can still do that. But I also really like what you're saying when I think about other train stations, even just in New England. And, you know, I had a son going to school in Vermont and, and one going down to Boston and New York and, and every other little train stop, if you go to Claremont or if you go to any of those little ones in Vermont, you get off the train and all that stuff's right there. And there's places for people to live that are small and affordable and they can walk. And, and you're right, it's really built up around the train stations. And probably the last place we would need more cars is downtown on Water Street. So I just think you, you make a great point.
Sir, did you participate at all in the, the?
He did. He was at, yeah.
Oh, he did. Okay, so you're aware, okay. I'm just trying to make sure you knew what was, where some of this is evolving from. That was part of the whole planning process. Dave?
Yeah, uh, just to respond to a few comments. I mean, we are creating additional density by this.
Oh, yes, we are.
You know, quite a bit and reducing the parking. I think what we're talking about here, to boil it all down, is three stories to four stories.
Yes.
And when we looked at that, um, you know, the question always boils down to how far do you go? And, and you have to, you go through a public process and the process of committees and so forth. This went through a very public process. Everyone was invited to a public forum. We got a lot of people to show up and participate. It was an open forum. You could get on, you know, sign up on the website and get updates. So, I mean, going to, you know, like sending it to all these committees, you know, sometimes it's like, you know, the, we did, we do get out to the public. And what we had heard, and as a planner, I'm okay with height, really. I mean, density, you know, I, you know, I mean, but where do you go? Do you go to 200 feet, you know? Do you go from 35 to 50? There, you, you have to like stop somewhere. So Horsley Witten Group, we had discussed it. We went out, we, we asked, we showed people during the public forum, we did a survey, we showed people what they want, showed them ideas, and it was pretty consistent that the Lincoln Street neighborhood and the public input that we received was concerned about height. So made a decision to keep it at 35. Not to say we can't go higher, but it was more in reaction to the public input and the, and, you know, the information we received. And that's how it, it stayed there and the existing conditions and the existing massing and scaling out there. We understand there's a few taller buildings out there, but at the end of the day, that's the way the decision is made. We talked about this at the, you know, at the board level as well. So, um, that's how it is. And then just to clear up some confusion, it said no development within 25 feet. That's not accurate. Uh, it's a zero setback and the 25-foot is you can't put it past 25 feet. So we want it on the road. It's, it's a build-to line, it's zero to 25. So it's not past, you can't put it past 25. So we want them up by the road, we want them, you know, to, to have that street connection in these areas. So just, just wanted to, you know.
We probably wouldn't.
Uh, clear that up.
We probably wouldn't want four stories on the road.
On the green design, um, component, that is being worked on, looked at, we're looking at net zero construction. I don't feel it's, you know, it needs, this was a grant for affordable housing, that was the charge. You could dovetail it, but I don't think they, you know, they can be done and worked on separately. Cause that's, that's changing building codes. I mean, you're going to require, you know, R-50 in the, in the ceilings instead of R-38. That, that's the path to, to get to, you know, green, you know, you can use building permit fee incentives and so forth. In, in a MUND, in an optional development, because if you, the more requirements you make in this, the less incentive it becomes because it's optional. If people say, okay, I gotta spend, you know, 30% more for site drawings and, and, you know, and, and.
Engineering.
Yeah, and engineering and so forth, and architectural and high-quality urban design and, you know, landscaping and sidewalks and so forth and street furniture, then they might not take advantage of it. So you have to balance that, you know, you want people to take advantage of this because this increases density, is, I see this as a sustainable, uh, option. The green building design, I think we could handle in, in another, um, you know, work on that separately than to attach it here. Cause it's all about getting people to use this option. And if you put too many requirements in, they'll just go into the conventional zoning. But density, you know, goes from 3,200 square feet in the C1 in Lincoln Street to zero square feet. You're only restricted by height and parking is basically cut in half, uh, about a 50% reduction in parking, which is quite significant, I think.
Did you want to speak to, just a minute, she'd like to speak again, please. We'll get you in a minute.
Hi, Eileen again. Um, so Dave, what you're saying is that green design and building affordable housing are incompatible in terms of, no?
No. No, that's not what I'm saying.
It sounds like green design puts a financial roadblock in front of a developer who wants to do these buildings. And that if we put too many roadblocks there, they're not going to want to do it at all.
To create affordable housing under this ordinance.
Right.
I didn't feel it was the place to put that. And with the plan New Hampshire criteria and what the grant was for and the purpose, we felt this was the best. And we are already considering green design and so forth in, in, outside of this. So it very well could happen.
Green design could happen.
Well, this is green design too.
Or is, maybe.
There's a lot of components of green design. If you're talking about, I mean, this has a lot of green design features in it, but what you're talking about, are you talking about insulation?
Yes.
Solar and, you know, geothermal and so forth. That is being worked on elsewhere.
So not for projects like this?
Not for, not for this amendment, no.
But if it's being worked on elsewhere, it'll include the whole town.
Correct.
So it will include this at some point, once it's developed.
Yeah. If it, if it moves to that, yeah. I mean, you have to, you have to go through quite a, you know, you want to go through a process to do that, to, you know, start requiring those.
But it would include all new construction.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be to a particular zone.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, this is only going to affect really a handful of properties in Exeter. That's, that's another thing.
So that might be.
Where does that stand? That potential change?
Oh, we're just starting to look at it and examine it. You know, that's on my list. I, I made that list. We, you know, Russ and I have been talking about net zero construction and start talking about, you know, but that, it's, it's, it's in its infancy, I would say.
So it's a year out?
Well, I don't know. It's in its infancy.
You gotta kick it up a notch.
There may be some incentive there as we get to that point to encourage the contractors or the builders to use the green design. And exchange of that, here's what you get. I don't know what it is, but that's, all those things have to be figured out.
Well, I would think that the plus is for communicating that to people in town as well as folks outside of town. It says, here we are working on these really interesting high-density locations and portions for workforce housing and we're creating good, solid green design and everybody should take a look at us. Everybody should pay attention because this is where it's at. And it would, I'd like to be ahead of the game instead of in the infancy. Anyhow.
Point well taken, yep.
Yeah, I think it's happening. And remember, it only applies to new construction.
Yes.
That's what it would. And we have 6,400 properties and, I mean, and if you look at the existing infrastructure with insulation and so forth, I mean, probably most of them could, could use some upgrades. So anything we do would only apply to, you know, fraction, would only apply to new development.
Yeah.
So I think there's a big, you know, need to focus on existing even more so than new construction. I mean, I think you need to focus on both, but.
Yes, yeah. But that's not this. This is a step.
Yeah.
Down a long, probably a fairly long road. Maybe we want to accelerate it, but when we look at this, I believe this represented something potentially unique. Whoops, am I not talking into the, sorry about that? I don't like them. But we felt that as we developed this and with Horsley Witten, um, we were coming up with, I won't call it a novelty, but at least it's, it's a different step. And that at least was what was important as far as I was concerned.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it is to try to get increased density. So in areas where infrastructure already exists, where you can share resources, share road frontage, no new roads, no new water lines, no new sewer lines, it's a shared resource. That's what sustainability, the more folks you get to share the same resources, the less your footprint is. Um, so that's why, you know, your point, you know, you go, you go up, you add another floor, you do add more density, but at some point you, the question is how far do you go?
The same as the other zones, at least. And in fact, it would be less because with the setback, there were two.
Could you use a microphone, please?
To be heard by other than in this road.
Right, I, I wholeheartedly agree. And, and the other thing too is for affordable housing and you would gain more affordable housing, which is the whole point of this, of warrant, is if you increase the density, you're going to get that. And with the shared resources, that also falls back onto development. When you have shared hallways, shared entrances, shared roofs, shared, um, things, you increase the affordability overall because those units as a, when you go higher, share all those things versus individual, say, townhomes where individual garages, individual, um, entryways, individual dormers over those entryways. All those things add money. So if you're after affordability and again, I, if I'm, if it's about the character of the, the, and they don't want to go higher, I'm just saying is, is wouldn't it make sense like every other town that's ever had a train station to add one story near, it could be a 50-foot setback? I'm just saying is, is it seems like it's going to be a lost opportunity and to, for this person here, you would appease her a lot too, because the more you put next to the train station, the less carbon footprint for single-use occupancy vehicles. That is, we could be recycling for 100 years here and you're never going to approach what you can do right now as a board for the environment. You're never going to approach it. Never. And this is a way for Exeter, like this, like this person here is asking, to be green. Be green, be environmentally. This is, if you're not going to do it, to me, it's almost environmentally irresponsible not to do that next to the train station. And I'm not saying on Lincoln Street. I'm saying 50 feet in, nobody's going to see it.
So.
Jen?
I mean, the, the reason that we decided to do the 35 feet is basically because of public input, right? So the survey was issued, 400 people or so responded and said, you know, the character of Lincoln Street should be smaller height. Um, and I completely see what you're saying. I mean, I feel like part of the issue, and it's been a long time since I've seen that survey, but I think part of the issue is because you, you think of, when I think of Lincoln Street, there's two very different ends of Lincoln Street. There's the Burnhams end and the train station end and the RJ's end, which is, I would say, not the most beautiful architecture. And then there's the other side with, you know, where the school is and there's these beautiful old buildings, um, very residential, lots of trees. I would hate to see a 50-foot tall building on that end, you know? Like, it's, I'm wondering if when people were filling out the survey, they said, oh.
That's not in the district.
That's not in the district.
The district is that, then it goes along Bridge, Bridge Brothers and does, it cars out that residential across from Lincoln Street School? And it goes along the tracks? And then it goes to like the Pizza Academy to, um, I forget what that is. Well, no, no, not, not on Front Street.
But I wonder if people understood that when they were filling out the survey? Like, I wonder if that feedback.
Well, we had maps. We showed them maps.
Yeah.
And showed them, you know, redlined where it was.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, it just seemed to me like, I mean, I think, I think it's a good point, you know, you, you want the higher density around the train station. know, you, you want the higher density around the train station. I, I lived in Japan for six months and basically that's how, that's how the train stations are built. You've got your train station, you've got your super high density, your grocery store, all of your amenities right near the train station. And then you get on your bike and you go, you know, out to your house. Um, I mean, that's not how we've designed our town so far, but, you know, this is an opportunity for change. So I think it's a good point, although I hate to go against the public survey input because I think that's really valuable.
I, I think it is valuable and I think I went to one of those sessions and, and I think I looked at the survey months and months ago, whenever it was. But, um, and so we obviously have to listen to it. And I know there's great attempts made to reach as many people as possible. But also four hundred people out of what fifteen thousand is like two or three percent. So I think we have to weigh that as well. And it's not because the other ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent didn't care. It might be they couldn't make the meeting or their grandma died or whatever. So I, I think there comes the, considering that public input and then considering the points like gentlemen, and you've just made, um, and thinking long-term and where's the balance? Because I think everyone's agreeing with a lot of what's in there. I don't, it's not saying, hey, it was a bad product by any means. It's just saying, hey, let's consider by the train station. If we really want to be sustainable, maybe we build up a little density there, um, which is, I don't think anything disparaging about what we have. It's just this consideration that maybe wasn't vetted as well as it could be because we only had two or three percent return.
Ma'am, you'd like to speak?
Yes, Irene Hall for Sharon Circle. I've lived in town for four years, but previous to that, uh, worked in various nonprofits across the state for, uh, working families and building self-sufficiency for families. And my concern is making sure that we attract and retain working families. And to me, it makes sense to increase the Lincoln Street area to fifty, because I'm most concerned that we are providing housing, affordable housing for working families that in retail and service industries. And if we add that extra fifteen feet to a building, that could be one or two families. And the big draw for a, a young working family or a single parent is the elementary school is right there. And also the amenities are right there as well. But I think by increasing, uh, to fifty feet in that area, that could be three more families that we could retain in the town. And hopefully they could become, you know, homeowners. But we need to make more, my concern is making sure we have more affordable housing for, uh, single parents, working, working folks. I'd hate to see these families move to Hampton or Seabrook or Epping and then we become the town with no young working families. And I think, I know myself, I didn't start off with a house. I started off with, um, housing that was affordable and built a career and now, um, can have the house that I choose. But we all have to start somewhere and build a community and we need to make spaces for these families. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from the board? My, the discussion has, has been, uh, around, excuse me. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I don't disagree. I, I agree with the points that have been made. I guess my concern maybe is along the lines of what Jen started talking about is there was a process, you had input. What happens the next time that there's a process and we ask for input and the people who were part of the process said, well, you didn't listen to me anyways, so I'm not going to participate next time. So I guess my question is, is there a possible two-step process here where this has been worked out and could it be amended to fifty feet if there's, you know, a petition, a groundswell of support next year? Um, so I guess that's my process question.
Obviously, yeah. I mean, once it, you know, you can change it every year. Uh, if the board was inclined to consider fifty feet this year, uh, I wouldn't recommend changing this to thirty-five to fifty and then holding a public hearing on the twenty-third. What I would suggest is continuing this public hearing and then amending it to fifty feet and having a public hearing on that. Because very well, you could get a lot of people out, if it was fifty feet, that, that provided the input and have a different opinion. I, you know, and then if, if, or if you did that, you just solely said fifty feet and then did the public hearing on the twenty-third and people came out and didn't want it, then you're, then you're off till next year for anything. So you, you could do that i- if you wanted to, you know, get it done this year. Uh, but if you're comfortable with thirty-five feet, you adopt it. But if you didn't want, you know, you wanted to explore changing it, you could do it that way. And then have two public hearings, continue this one and have a new public hearing on, on fifty feet and see what happens. And then we, I mean, everyone who came, we have a couple, I forget how many numbers, but quite a few people on the Exeter Housing, uh, forum, uh, up to the Exeter Housing Future dot com website and, or dot org, whatever it is. Uh, I think it's, but anyway, uh, we could send, you know, an e-blast out to them, uh, so they would know what, you know, what's happening on the twenty-third, if that's the board so chooses. But you could also vote to put this, you know, on the twenty-twenty warrant this evening.
I, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm not asking for fifty feet for the entire thing. And I think it would be completely unreasonable for fifty feet to be next to the beautiful buildings that you're talking about or that you talked about. I, I, that's not, I'm, I'm looking for a middle ground here. I'm looking for fifty feet from the residential area, fifty feet in from Lincoln Street. So that really the, the, the visual impact has not changed for those people that want to maintain the character. I'm just trying to come up with a middle ground here that doesn't alter, upset the oppo cards. I think it's a very important warrant. We should move through with it. If, I, I think it needs to be done this year. Um, I was, I just feel that I was trying to come up with and thinking of the other zones, how, how it was constructed, what would be a fair middle ground for everybody to find this process fair and also to increase the sustainability and, and the affordable housing that this is after. And, um, I guess that's all I want to say is I'm not look, I'm not looking, I don't think the warrant should have it. I think there should be a substantial setback. Fifty feet, that's a, you can't, that's.
If you're fifty feet from Lincoln and fifty feet from other residential, how mu- how much land is left?
There's another two or three hundred feet, two hundred feet.
Well, he's on his property.
On, on my property. So.
On your property.
Yeah. But there's also, but then again, you also have Dave Cowie, Prescott, those are two or three hundred feet deep too.
Yeah, you'd have to look at that. I mean, I could, I mean, that's the issue is like.
I could be talking into fifty feet if we had enough setback.
Well, there is.
What we, what, what, but this, what we call for here is zero to thirty-five feet. I wouldn't want to see fifty feet.
But if you, yeah, if you do fifty feet, then you, fifty feet, you might be only talking about three properties. You know, like.
How much are we talking about?
Changing, because, because the Prescott pump might have it, uh, Prescott pump would have it, Cowie's place would have it, and this parcel would have it. Uh, Burnham, the Burnham Strip is forty feet deep as it is. So.
Right.
Okay.
No matter how you slice it, so that.
Over the tracks.
Yeah, that'd be out. Uh, the, the Legion, the Legion parcel would be out. Um, you know, the two parcels Lexi's, where Old Lexi's used to be, those couple parcels, they wouldn't have it.
Right.
Um, unless some parcels consolidate.
Right.
So Dave, you, you, I, I, you realize you're, you're proving my point is the fact that you wouldn't be altering any of those properties with a fifty-foot setback. You would only be oper- altering the properties that do have the depth that are on the train tracks. So you, you're proving my point of what I'm trying to say here. And fifty feet.
I don't know what's it on Front Street though. I, I think that would take some analysis to do. You wouldn't want to just say, oh, fifty feet back. Cause you know, I have done an analysis along Front Street and what that means or doesn't mean.
Well, and the whole point of the, the urban design stuff is to engage the pedestrian sidewalks. So once you start putting in a fifty-foot setback, that's, you're not engaging the sidewalk anymore. So I think.
No, no, I'm saying the fifty feet starts, the, the fifty feet starts in fifty. So.
Oh, so you can do thirty-five.
You can do three stories on the front.
Thirty, so also.
So you have eyes.
So what I'm saying is, is it's, and how interesting would that architecture be next to the current residential things where you have multiple roof lines, where you have the multiple beautiful homes, then you have fifty feet of another building. And then the developer has the opportunity to create a very beautiful architectural design that's fifty feet up, you know, in the building. So you might get a little bit.
So it steps up.
Yeah, a little more interest in the architecture. You're going to have the tree scapes to help with the human scale. And then basically what you're building is, is you're not going to end up with this homogeneous design of all these massive homes stuffed at thirty-five feet. It's going to be a sea, a, a sea thirty, three hundred feet deep in my property of thirty-five feet. That doesn't really seem that appealing. And that might actually detract from the character versus a stepped model and more architectural flexibility with the fifty feet. And again, it's, it's, it's an island within, within the properties. It's, it's not near any other buddy's property. It's, and, and, and that's what makes it appealing. And that was the middle ground that I was trying to come up with that seemed reasonable. Again, everything needs to be reasonable. Two hundred feet, unreasonable. Fifty feet, right on Lincoln Street going straight up? To- I totally understand the, the fear of that. That, that's fearful. That's not good architecture. But things near the train track where the depth is, yeah, that makes sense.
And step it up on the front.
You, you never know what's going to happen with that.
No.
Because then it could be first story, I could envision, you know, because you don't know who's going to own this and who's going to develop it.
Right.
If you do that, the fifty-foot setback, then they could put a, because commercial has to be on the bottom floor. And then they don't want, they need the commercial space to extend back. So they could put a single row, single-story building on the front and then build a fifty-foot building in the back. I mean, not necessarily have to be connected. I guess my point is, is that just random fifty-foot setback, I would, it, because he had mentioned that to me before and I started thinking about it. Uh, I think you'd really have to do an analysis. I think you would either just do fifty feet, you know, like i- if you're going to do fifty feet, fifty feet back, then I probably want to look at GIS, look at the properties, figure out what the impact is and come back and give you an informed decision on, on what the different scenarios could come from that. I understand the point.
Yeah.
And like I said before, I'm, you know, you don't have to convince me with height usually. It's, you know, density and so forth. But, you know, you know how we got here. We, we don't have to explain that again. But if it's, if you're putting a setback on it, I, I would like to look at it and not, like, if there is a property, like the Bridge Brothers property, that might, that might shut down that property where maybe you do want the fifty-foot height on that one right along the track. You see what I'm saying? Like, you don't want it to, you know, it helps some property at the expense of others, like it cut out that you'd want to include.
You want the option there somehow.
Yeah. So maybe you'd look at it, maybe come up with some, like seeing what you'd want right around there, then you'd come up with an amendment to fit that of what you wanted. I don't know if just saying fifty feet back is going to solve that. I mean, I hate to do that at this point.
Fifty feet back from the railroad tracks.
No, fifty feet back from the right away. That's what I heard.
Yep.
Fifty feet back from the road.
Correct.
And then also where the Agway Road is, which would be, I'm not sure of the road there, you would have fifty feet back from that road too. So the Bridge Brothers property, which is probably two hundred feet in depth, that would be a great transition from that nice neighborhood that would come fifty feet and then maybe fifty feet in, like I was saying, the architectural detail steps up a floor and so that you have a nice, you know, beautiful building that's offset from that. So Bridge Brothers would work, the, the storage place, um, I forget his name, would work. And then you have all the other properties on the other side of the railroad tracks that this thirty-five-foot setback is affecting, that isn't even really involved in the character, I think that was in the survey. I mean, you're talking all that other side on Prescott and, and over by Cody's auto body. That's all included in this. And I think people are so concerned about that two hundred yards of, of Lincoln Street and how the transition from the residential to the commercial that, you know, that needs to be really considered in fifty feet as a generous and, and, and everybody benefits. The, the landowners that own the C one, everyone's pretty much going to benefit except for the one like Bob Burnhams and Lexi's and, and the, and the architectural things that maybe people want to keep. Those won't, those won't get, those are going to be the same because the setback is further. So it kind of benefits everybody for the, on the developing side, limits what the character changes for the people that, you know, filled out the survey.
So you're saying that's this, will respect what the people who filled out the survey wanted, but still add this additional benefit for the affordable housing, the sustainability piece?
I, I, the, the people that are for the thirty-five feet, I wholeheartedly agree that, that to have fifty feet on right at Lincoln Street on top of you, be completely out of character. And I think, I think that's what, what, I think that's where the, that all came from, not understanding the blanket that they're throwing over the entire aspects of all those properties. And I, and I think, I think vis- I think it's more of an emotional and visual thing that they're, that they were after in trying to achieve there. And I, I, rather than realizing that it was, you know, acres on the other side of the tracks as well as, you know, near the.
I, I guess I take that because I will admit that while I fill things out, I think about Lincoln Street, I think about Burnhams through Jerry's. And I don't even, I don't even know if I know exactly how all those, those properties back there are situated. So for me, filling it out as, you know, one of four hundred people, I was doing what you were saying, thinking Burnhams through Jerry's area is what it's really, and on to the church, but.
So let me say, I think that we haven't found any real problems or concerns with the, the wording that we have. There's needs to be, we had, need more discussion on the, I'll call it the fifty feet.
You could, yes.
We could do that and then come back.
But, well, you got to determine what the revision is now to hold a public hearing on that language for the twenty-third. So if you want to, uh, hold it, you got to figure out what that language says.
Tonight.
Tonight, yes.
I think in, in my opinion, what you've said is that's going to take some research.
I believe.
What you would want to do is very thorough.
Unless you just made a fifty feet.
Yeah.
If you just made a fifty feet, then okay.
We're all set.
But if you're starting to put a setback on it.
Mm-hmm. Which is what I'm, I'm hearing. But, so we had the survey and four hundred people responded and no, that's not even close to the town's population. But everybody had an opportunity to do it and maybe some of them chose not to because they were fine with how this was worded. Or they were okay with what we decided to do. And so four hundred people spoke and we've come up with these articles, these amendments, and they're pretty solid and not, no one has any real objection. There's been a couple of things that maybe we could add. The fifty feet seems to be a sticking point. If we don't get this tonight and make some sort of a, you know, continuance and change and have it heard again on the twenty-third, we lose the opportunity to do anything.
This year.
This year. And so my thought would be, put it through as it is, do the research, really do a proper oversee of this whole fifty-foot thing. And then if we need to amend it next year, then we do. Because I think it's going to take a few months to figure that out, get public input, find out. So I think if you say fifty feet, you're going to have a group come out and say, no, that's not what we want. And are we really respecting the four hundred people that took the time to do this and said, we really not comfortable with anything over thirty-five feet? There's got to be a lot of, there's got to be public input again and some discussion and some communication. We can't do that in two weeks.
I would like, I think fifty feet makes sense, but not until we have the opportunity to do what you just said.
Exactly.
Review it, study it. Seems like it makes some sense in the right place, but.
This is a hurry-up thing.
I don't think I'm ready to do it without notice.
Yeah, it's unfortunate we didn't have this discussion, like, you know, but it was pretty loud and clear when we went through the public input process.
Oh, goodness sakes, yes.
That.
And we need to honor that.
And I'm sorry that we didn't have more people.
Mostly.
Sorry, we didn't have more people attend when, when Nate came in and presented.
Yeah, he came in.
And detailed the, the, yeah, the results of the studies and everything. Because we had a great, we did have a lot, several opportunities.
That was a public hearing on it.
No.
On this language. I mean, this is the first time that the public had an opportunity to provide input on this language. So saying, you know, we have to, we have to approve this tonight when it's really the first public hearing, it's, I think a little bit.
Do we have any statistics on how many people use the train to go to work every morning to go into Boston?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I said hundreds or thousands?
I actually have that in mind.
Exeter's the most, Exeter's the most traveled stop on the Down Easter line.
Yeah, I have the stats.
But do we know how many like use it for commuting to work?
Hundreds.
Hundreds.
A hundred, hundred and twenty on the morning train.
Housing close to the train station with more people.
Oh, yes.
Would they move from other towns to come here?
Yep.
No.
Hundreds, tens, tens, twenty?
Demand is there. All the people that are from the one twenty-eight perimeter commuting out the Natick.
I know, I know someone who moved from Manchester to here because she works in Boston.
I guess.
And I know that, and you made the point earlier, the most valuable land in the greater Boston area now is around subway stations. That's where the apartments are going up. And if there's a new subway station going five miles up the road, that's where they're buying the land for, for future. Unlike what you did.
I, I think the, it, I think the article needs to move forward. I don't want it to be. I don't want it to be held up. All I'm saying is, is that I, I think there's a, there could be a missed opportunity. I think it is more important to get the article through and, and, and move forward with the process. I don't think we wanna gum up the process in my opinion here. I think, I, I, I'm, I'm here as a plea for you to reconsider portions of it in a slight amendment so that it matches the density of the other area just slightly less. And I, I don't feel that the article is so important because it is, is, is moving towards a green, it's not as green as she wants it, it's not as green as I want it, it doesn't fulfill the housing that she wants, but it's moving in the right direction. And I think it's such a positive step for that, that I think that it needs to be voted on and I, I agree with going into greater detail would be better. And I think the fifty-foot height, in my opinion, obviously better, but let's just move forward from, from my perspective, um, just to get things done. And then if you are willing to go forward with more due diligence, that would be greatly appreciated and I think the environment and our future kids would, would really appreciate that as well.
And instead of waiting another thirty years, you'll come and help us with some of that maybe? No, but we, we may, we may need, some of us may need you to walk us around the property.
I want the article to exist for the town and for the environment, but I'm not a person of conflict and I don't wanna come here and have the pitchforks come out on me.
No, I just want, I want, I want you to help us understand what you want.
I know, but I, but I'm just saying, I will, but I'm just saying is, is I, I'm trying to do it in a systematic, fair way so that developers or people that own the property can just come in, know, plan, have a really good idea of what can be built that's fair and reasonable and, and just move forward with, and, and be within the zoning and, and just be, and have it be a easier process. And I think the article is so important that we need to move forward and if you want to amendment that, amend it, that's fine and, and moving forward. But I think, I think there's a missed opportunity.
Yep.
Yeah, because we are at a point now where we've got, well, I won't say we got to, but it's important on us, I believe, to move something forward this year. Because if we're gonna go, if we're gonna with, basically withdraw or try to rewrite this, we won't make it. That means then, then a whole nother year is lost. And unfortunately, years are important. And if we're wanting to see Exeter be what we envision it to be, then I think it's important that we take this step now. Because otherwise we'll be a year from now and we, we may be no better off and we will have lost, well, I'm getting an affirmative nod.
On, on that note, I'd like to make a motion if I could.
Dave has a comment first.
Hold on, ju- just, we're talking about next year, that doesn't need to happen. I guess what I would ask, if, if the board is the, I'm not, I didn't hear from everyone. If, if you're looking like the board, the majority of the board thinks that increasing the height is a good idea, then you could do what I had said originally by continuing this public hearing, holding a new one. You could even do fifty-foot setback, fifty feet. And then in that time, I will, because this, this is the only thing that people are talking about. Everyone like, I, what I'm hearing is everyone likes this ordinance and that, that small section is the only thing from thirty-five to fifty feet. So you, it's easy to make that and then have, post a public hearing for that and have both public hearings on the twenty-third. I mean, you, I'm, I'm just saying that as an option. You know, I, I don't know if you're ready to do it, but that is an option. So you don't have to wait till next year if you don't want it.
I, I do like that option because I, if it's simple for you and we're only talking about a very few properties and really what we're asking for is in keeping with the intent of the public opinion and the feedback we heard anyway, that seems like a win-win solution because I don't think anybody wants to push stuff past this year. But if what you're offering allows us to possibly get both in...
Well, yeah, you wouldn't get both in, what you'd...
Well, you get the, the one in the amendment, yeah.
Yeah, the one in the amendment on the twenty-third and then you'd vote which one you wanted to send after the public hearing for both of them. You'd send one to the warrant and not, not the other.
And can you put information together for us quick enough that apps marked up and maybe arrange your walk around?
Yeah, yeah, it'll just, it'll just take some analysis, but I, you know.
Maybe, maybe a site visit?
Yeah.
Maybe.
I mean, it's twenty-third, today's the night.
I know.
I can do one, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah.
As he hit bobbing, so...
It's bobbing, that's a...
So what's, what's, which motion is...
I'm not gonna make a motion, I guess.
Oh, yeah, you'd, no, you'd make a motion to continue the public hearing.
All right, I'll make a...
And then you would, let me see your motion. Continue the public hearing on this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Until January twenty-third and seven P M., you could do that.
All right.
And then you would move, uh, that the board hold a public hearing on the proposed amendment regarding the mixed-use neighborhood development with the latest revision date of December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen and including the revision as discussed tonight, changing the, the height in the Lincoln Street, Garfield Street and Rockingham Street in the C one district from thirty-five to fifty foot, fifty, which will be fif- which can start fifty feet from, uh, the front property line.
So moved.
And resident, and residential line.
And residential line.
All right, so moved. Daniel, you got that?
Thirty-five, yeah.
Anybody understand the intent of the motion?
You wanna read it back?
Need to have that a little bit more clear.
Yeah.
Okay. You want to state it again?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, fifty feet.
Because I'm not sure exactly what it's, what would...
The, the first part is that we're continuing the hearing on...
Yeah, that's fine, I have no problem with that. It's what, it's what this next step, that we're gonna notice a public hearing on the twenty-third to do...
Well, adding that fifty feet from residence, that, I mean, we have side setbacks, um...
I, I'm worried...
Buffering requirements anyway. I mean, and, and, and that might have the effect of someone building it to push it, like not build it twenty-five-foot setback. They're not gonna go up thirty-five, go, you know, a terrace and then go up. They're just gonna move the whole building so you get a fifty-foot, but I don't know, I don't know. You know, all these things have consequences that you don't think of when you change.
Once, once we start to ticker...
I mean, it's easy to guess what will happen, but there's a lot of different things that will happen when you, when you change things. Um, you know, yard setbacks.
I'm not opposed to it, so don't misunderstand. I just need to know what, exactly what it is because we're gonna have to notice it.
Let me see the C one district. C one district.
The fifty-foot setback is...
We need to work this out.
Yeah, we gotta work it out here. Thank you.
Motions need to come from the board and not from the public.
Yeah, this is writing it legally to...
I mean, what do you, what, what do you want it to be? Do you want it to be from the sides? Do you wanna, a, a, a distance between...
I'll answer your question with a question, Dave. What's the difference of that and just applying the article to all three areas equally? In other words, we've removed, if I, as I understand it, we've moved the fifty-feet height from Lincoln Street. Everything else applies at Lincoln Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing we're ch- talking about changing here is thirty-five to fifty.
Yeah.
But not everywhere.
But then, putting some sort of setback, front and side on it. Or, but not side, but front and residential.
We didn't suggest residential.
Yeah.
No, I...
We're still, we're still... They're still working here.
We're still working on this, we've closed people comment.
Okay, I'm just only asking a question, not commenting. I think it would be clearer if we said six point nineteen point three, A, A five, is that what you're saying? So six point nineteen point three, A five, it would be changed. I'm just clarifying.
Well, that's, yeah, but, but now it's, it's going thirty-five to fifty, that's how it started. But now to introduce setbacks.
Yeah.
Or do you wanna just change it to fifty? I guess, I mean, you know, it's almost like when you're talking about that, like it's, there's no right or wrong answer. I mean, it's fifty-foot back, but do you want it fifty-foot from the, from abutting residential?
Yeah, I think you do. Because it's four stories. If it's four stories, I think you do.
I, that much, I agree.
I'm sensing we're getting in a jam again and we should go back to Plan A.
Yeah, and then, and then the, the house next door to the housing of the condos, the mid, the old mill, right?
Yeah.
Right next door, that's residential. So then they can't go up because they abut the residential use, but that's a residential use that's over fifty feet. So it's just...
It seems like we're rushing it.
Yeah, we need to put it through as soon as...
They need some analysis.
Yeah, we need, really need more time to do an analysis.
I was just trying to accommodate.
Right, yeah.
To figure it out.
It's a good try.
We appreciate that, Dave, but I really think that, that the sense is that we really need to, to move ahead with what we have and keep it all open to further studying.
Or I think you just, I think this is what it boils down to. If you wanna continue this public hearing and then hold a new public hearing, you just change thirty-five to fifty.
Right.
And don't do the setbacks.
Because it's something that would come before the planning board later anyway.
Yeah, no.
Well, yeah, that would be another, yeah, we, we, or the third option, commit to, yeah, just commit to following it up and doing an analysis and seeing we can increase the height. Because honestly, this is an optional, uh, thing that, that's likely that, you know, it's not gonna, I mean, hopefully it gets taken advantage of right away, but I'm sure there'll still be plenty of development opportunities a year from now.
That might be the simplest anyways, just what you said, go thirty-five to fifty and then if there are amendments from that side of it, to take care of it.
Well, if you did, but I, I heard people there aren't excited about just doing that from thirty-five to fifty.
I like, I like that idea of, it would basically be striking the thirty-five-foot exemption of Lincoln Street from the Mund.
You'd be changing it from thirty-five to fifty.
Yeah. So, I mean, if we do that and then we have the public hearing on the twenty-third and, you know, if we get, and then we vote then, if we get a lot of feedback, then we say, okay, maybe we'll stick with thirty-five and, and think about nuancing it later. Otherwise, I mean, I feel comfortable personally with saying it's fifty. Every one of these development projects is going to have a public hearing.
Right.
And if there are situations where the fifty right adjacent to something doesn't make sense, then, you know, we say it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, it's not...
No, it doesn't work.
That doesn't work.
That's very...
You're not gonna say it doesn't make sense, you need to move the building over. If the zoning allows up to fifty feet, then they can put up to fifty feet.
Then they can do it, yeah.
I, I think that needs more...
Really needs more...
But if we do the fifty feet and then you're looking at the future amendments coming back the other way to deal with those, then I think that's workable.
Yeah, but I heard, it didn't sound like everyone was comfortable with just changing thirty-five to fifty.
No.
I'm not.
That's why I really think that we need to, to stay with what we have and move it along.
Yes.
And then take this as another assignment to that committee.
Nice.
Yeah.
When's that next meeting, man?
January twenty-third?
No, the, for the, our committee on Friday mornings.
Oh, I don't know, I'd have to check.
Well, give it a whirl, John.
All right, uh, let's try with what we were gonna start with here. I moved that the board place the proposed amendment regarding the mixed-use neighborhood development with the latest revision date of December seventeen, two thousand nineteen, uh, on the two thousand twenty town warrant with a recommendation for adoption.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion?
Quick, quick discussion and...
Quick discussion, Nick.
And I can go either way. I mean, I like the idea of fifty feet, but I understand, given the timing of it, I think this is a reasonable motion, but I'd like, I'd like it, and I'm not gonna set a condition to it, but I really, I think the appetite's there to continue this discussion and I'd like to see the board continue to work so that maybe next year we can, we can bring the revision back.
I think it's just gonna be like peeling on an onion. We do one thing and then we find something else.
It'll allow Dave to do the analysis. I mean, personally, I, I would change it to fifty, but I, I would go along with the motion, John, because I think, given the time, I think that's the reasonable thing to do. And I want, and I agree with Andrew, I, I wanna move ahead with this.
I don't dislike the idea of fifty, I'm just not comfortable with it yet.
Yep.
And we have a meeting, I think, scheduled on the seventeenth, the master plan committee. Maybe we could meet there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's too late for the, that's one thing about the town, the drawbacks.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
You get one shot a year, it kinda comes up and then...
I mean, can we just continue it to next week then and just, like, you guys have your meeting, maybe figure it out and then, I mean, do we have to, we don't have to vote on this tonight.
Right, exactly. Almost when I look across the people, it looks like there's more people favoring the fifty feet or thirty-five anyway now. So if you continued it, then you could be more definitive about it. But, I mean, I know I would and Gwen and Nico and you and...
Okay, but if, so if we continue it to the twenty-third, we still, then we, we, how are we gonna notice a public hearing?
Option, it's either the, on the twenty-third, you're in the same boat, it's either this or nothing.
Yeah.
So unless you, you, you have to vote to hold a public hearing by January thirteenth and your last night is tonight and you have to know the language that you're going to hold the public hearing on.
I don't think you can do it.
And you have to get the language down tonight to do it.
And we don't have that, right?
Yeah. So by just continuing it for the sake of continuing, it isn't gonna be any different in my opinion.
Yep.
Because then you're, you're still, you can't change it. Next, if you continue it and then on the twenty-third, you decide fifty foot's a great idea, well, it's too late, it's too late.
Yeah.
And if you did the opposite, you did the fifty foot and then you had a hearing on the twenty-third, is it, you can't change anything?
Well, that's going back to what I originally said was do both.
Right, which made sense to me.
Yeah.
Actually is the easiest, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call, we have a motion on the floor in a second, I'm gonna, and...
Do you know who's voting?
Uh, yes.
Who'd you assign?
Those that are at this table. The two alternates are not voting. This alternate...
Dave, what was that option again, going with both? Except I, just, can you, can you please repeat that one more time?
You, that's, thank you. You could, continue this hearing, so, or even close this hearing. I mean, but you'd wanna continue it. Um, it doesn't matter, but I would recommend continuing until the twenty-third. But then you could vote to hold a new public hearing on a revised version that you revised, say thirty-five to fifty or thirty-five to fifty with a fifty-foot setback and a fifty-foot front and residential district setback or however you wanted to word it. You'd have to come up with that exact language and vote to have a public hearing on that language. Because that language needs to be available for people to look and so forth. You know, you have to have a public hearing, that's the set language that you're taking to the public hearing. Then when you have the public hearing, then you gotta vote on either one of those exact languages. You can't change it at that point.
We should be doing that.
I like the idea. I like the idea.
I mean, we have to fish or cut bait here at some point in time.
Yeah, that's where we were, if you, yeah.
I'm comfortable with that.
I am too. You don't get a vote, but I like that.
Now, let's go back.
Because that gives, leaves everything on the table and gives time for more thought.
Exactly what our motion is, John, that you made and I seconded.
Well, I, I think that one probably won't get approved, right? Based on what Dave just said, you're probably not gonna approve that.
He made the motion as if no substantial being made to send it on, to send what we have now to the town warrant.
To stick with the thirty-five.
I would not recommend doing that if you're going to hold a new public hearing on the same ordinance with one thing changed. I would say continue this one.
Then I would withdraw my motion.
Oh, yes, yeah.
But so you need to come up with a revised version of the other.
This, this particular motion puts it to bed tonight.
Right.
No, for, not his motion.
Not.
Well.
You just withdrew it.
Oh, puts it to bed.
Puts it to bed.
Put it on the warrant.
If you vote for it.
Yeah, okay. A little confused about the, it put it to bed, okay.
So do we do nothing as far as a vote on it? Or do you want us to vote for fifty feet now? Or is that wait, that's on the twenty-third, that's the twenty-third.
We have to continue, we have to continue this and then we need to make another motion.
Yes. Don't worry about continuing.
A new hearing.
Let's, let's go back to the, a possible revision, what that, what does that revision look like and what does it say? And I can grab it, do it right here, it would be.
So shall we withdraw the second and the motion?
I think you already did.
Would that be less confusing for the board? Looks like we're going back to a clean slate, try to decide again what to do, so.
I'll withdraw the second.
And, John?
Yeah, I already withdrew.
Okay, we, those motions.
But I can read it again.
And, oh, you can always read it again. You can remove it. We love the public.
When this part is all done.
Well, it's sort of a process that's working.
Yeah.
This is, uh.
That's London Street.
London Street.
But do we, we also need to continue this one?
No. Well, that's, that's a con- conversation. Let's see, where is that? Nineteen thirteen? No, it's a different one.
Right, that's what I mean. I thought you were continuing this one at the beginning, but you.
No, we, we.
Those two.
This, this and this is the same.
No, this is London Street, the blue one.
You're right, no, it's right.
Do we need to continue this one as well?
I think you're looking right. I'll check on that in a minute. It's dark already.
Well, while Dave's writing.
I mean, you can't leave him yet.
Well, I don't wanna confuse cases up here, mix up cases.
Okay, all right.
Here we go.
The second one would be to vote to, um, move to, uh, you know that motion I provided, you got it.
Continue, right?
Yeah, the, I, I could read it. Uh, I moved that the board, no, let's not worry about continuing yet. We're dealing with this one, all right?
Well, listen.
Well, we'll do the continuing. I moved that the board hold a public hearing on the proposed amendment regarding the mixed-use neighborhood development with the latest revision date of December seventeen, two thousand nineteen, and including the revisions discussed tonight, which include changing section six point one nine.
Three.
Oh, yeah. Six point one nine sixteen point, no, no, six point nineteen point three, point B, point five, by striking thirty-five feet, replacing with fifty, and adding the fifty-foot height shall begin no less than fifty feet from the property line or any abutting residential district. So I say district because that's the R two in any abutting residential district, but not necessarily a residential use. That would be different. You could say district or use, and that would fold in, but I don't have a map or anything handy to determine, you know, like if there's a, there's a residential house in the C one, then you would need that fifty foot from that house. From the property line.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless, you know, if, that's if you wanted to do residential district or residential use. But I didn't include that.
So I, I, but I don't. You said before they can't go to fifty feet until they're fifty, uh, they meet a fifty-foot setback. Does it require them to build something in front of that to the street?
Yes, because you have a zero, you have a build-to line of zero to twenty-five.
Does that still exist even though?
Yeah.
We didn't do anything to take that away?
Yeah, they'll still build that.
There's supposed to be a retail requirement, and they're not gonna walk fifty feet to get to.
But just what might happen, you might get a strip building on a couple of those, like on, on the bigger properties. You might get a, a building in front and then, and, and not connected.
Right.
And it could be one or maybe two stories and then a fifty-foot multi, you know, you get a.
But they would have to build both buildings at the same time.
Oh, I don't know. It doesn't say that.
So you could have a fifty-foot.
You have to have a mixed use, so you would have to, to get a CO, they would have to commit to building the, the commercial, that's right. Because it has to be mixed use.
That's what I'm saying.
That has to be mixed use, yeah. But I guess you could do it just to do the analysis. I could do the analysis, come back with some more information on the twenty-third.
Right.
And, you know, and then try to figure it out. There might be fatal flaws in it, I don't know, but.
Right.
You know, it, it's not like we're saying we're adopting anything or putting it through the warrant tonight.
We're giving us two more weeks to think about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, so on the twenty-third, then there's the two options, and by then there'd be more information if there was a fatal flaw that wasn't thought of tonight.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Yep.
I would figure out this and see how it fits. Uh, but at that point, we couldn't change it, so, but at least it keeps it alive.
Sure.
Right.
So the twenty-third gives it, makes it an option. But then also, you know, people, we'll let people know on the website. So people that feel strongly about keeping it thirty-five, we, we might see them.
Yeah, it's good.
At the twenty-third, you know, because we did receive that feedback. That's kinda how it got there.
All right.
Yep.
But, uh, do we explain on the website about the fifty-foot setback for the fifty?
Yeah.
Foot height?
Yeah, I, I think we should.
Understand that, that might.
Yeah, we got to, we have to do that, yeah.
Well, I know we have to do it at the meeting, but do we do it on the website ahead of time? So maybe some people will say, okay, that's all right, I don't need to be there.
Oh, absolutely. I, yeah, I think, yeah, absolutely. I think informing the people that saw, took the time and signed up for updates is very important. And I will, you know, do that tomorrow, Monday at the latest.
That's your motion.
Dave, will you also be able to circle back with Nate at Horsley Witten from?
Oh, yeah.
To make sure there's no unintended consequences from something like this from his perspective?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's who I'll be on the phone with tomorrow. And he, they're the webmaster, so I don't have the edit capabilities. I just tell them what to post and what to put on and when to update, so. I need to talk to them.
Great resource.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then will they, like, send an email blast to all the participants? I, I mean, is there a way of going?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I will tell them. I will write the, I will write what I wanna say. I'll send it to him, talk to him tomorrow, and then he, they're the webmaster, they'll put it out, and it'll get an e-blast out is, is what happened tonight and what we're considering and, and about the January twenty-third meeting. And, and tell them specifically the change that's, you know, being proposed.
Okay, John, you ready to make a motion?
Um.
As stated or something?
Yes, yeah, yeah, what David said. Did you write that down, Dana?
You ready for a second? Or would you rather have somebody else?
I'll second it.
Okay, next, Nico second. All right, we got a motion in a second. Do we understand what the motion is? I think we've talked about it enough, be confused. So I'm gonna ask for hand vote, please. Those in favor, raise your right hand. That would be this one. Okay, opposed? One? Any abstentions? None. It carries. Thank you.
And do we need another motion to continue the hearing?
Yeah.
Are you making that motion?
Sure.
There's nothing here.
Oh, I thought that was a continue.
Yeah, this is, I moved that the board hold the public, uh, I moved that the board continue the public hearing on the proposed amendment regarding the mixed-use neighborhood development with the latest revision date of December seventeen, two thousand nineteen, to the January twenty-third, twenty twenty, planning board meeting at seven.
What that one says?
So moved.
Where's right out of your mouth, huh?
Mr. Chair.
Have a second, okay?
Okay.
For those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Yeah.
And opposed? Abstentions? None. Motion carries. One, one no vote.
You have to show up anyway.
All right.
Yeah.
Now, Dave, I may need a little help here. I don't know if we wires across or not, but the, the first item on our agenda is to continue the public hearing on Harbor Street Limited Properties.
Excuse me?
The, the first item on our agenda was.
Didn't you vote, didn't you vote to continue it?
Excuse me?
I thought you voted to continue it.
We voted to continue this one.
That's Harbor Street, isn't it?
No.
IS Realty Hundred Linda Street. Case number nineteen dash thirteen.
Yeah, I don't think we've done anything on.
No, okay.
So is that a typo?
No. No, they, they wanna be continued as well.
Okay, that's another case. We also need to.
Oh, yeah, you didn't do, okay.
All right.
No, we didn't do the. Gotcha. Yeah, then continue that one.
So Pete, would you like to make a motion here for Harbor Street Limited, blah, blah, blah?
I would move, uh.
I think we might leave out the blah, blah, blah.
I'm not gonna make it. Nico, you do it. I'm not gonna cut it into blah, blah, blah.
See if I can see. Mr. Chair, I move to continue the public hearing on the application of Harbor, Harbor Street Limited Partnership for two lot line adjustments and subdivision of a four point nine eight, nine six acre parcel into five single-family residential lots. Uh, case number nineteen dash eighteen to January twenty-third, twenty twenty?
At seven o'clock.
At seven, at seven o'clock PM.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so be it. Now. Do we need to talk about amendment article nine, section nine one?
For that, I don't see anyone here for that, so this might be a little bit quicker. The, this went, this had been in the making for a while. We, we always, the, the site plan, the, the zoning ordinance says it, I mean, I'll tell you exactly what it says. Just to give you a brief, you know, overview, I know I've done this before, but and we had the presentation by, uh, Kristen Murphy, our natural resource planner. But our zoning ordinance says alternate procedure for subdivision and site plan applications. In those cases where the proposed disturbance, activity, or development is associated with a project requiring planning board subdivision or site plan approval, the CUP process is outlined in the zoning ordinance, article nine point one point six A, and the waiver process is outlined in section nine point nine of the Exeter Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations are duplicative. To ensure an efficient and effective review, the applicant shall follow section nine point nine of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations and request a waiver from the wetland regulations and may obtain a waiver from article nine point one point six A CUP process. The issue is, is they're not duplicative. They haven't been. They have different criteria. And so we've kinda just been making sense of it, and it's always a waiver. It's not a conditional use permit if it comes to the planning board. If a single-family home or a duplex doesn't, or, or anything that doesn't trigger site plan approval, they go through the wetland conditional use permit process and come to you, and they don't ask for a waiver. They ask for a CUP, a conditional use permit, for basically like, you know, the same encroachment, the same, you know, it could be almost identical, they just call it something else, and so we always had an issue with that, but we worked with it. Uh, and it'd always been on Kristen and I's mind for the last couple of years to, to change that and make sure, you know, to, just to, to make them either duplicative, you know, make them truly duplicative with the same criteria, uh, or just kinda boil it into one, and, and that's what we decided to do. That's what we moved forward. So we wanted to mimic how it's applied. We didn't wanna make any substantive changes, although we had to, because they weren't duplicative. So just by, just by making them into one, substantive changes were made because there was criteria in one that didn't exist in the other. Uh, so we melded it to what we, how we apply it now, and this is the result. I believe it doesn't change any setbacks, um, and it just makes how we've applied these rules clear, in my opinion, and, and Kristen's. So she had, you know, she came, presented the, you know, we had questions. There was some questions about the table not being, um, you know, very intuitive to read, and she made those changes, brought it back to the board at the last meeting. Everyone seemed happier with, with the, happy with the table, so you voted to have a public hearing tonight, and here we are.
Yeah.
I would open it up to the public and.
Any comments from the board? Anyone in the public would like to speak to this? If so, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, so we will know who's speaking, and our viewers at home will also know who's speaking. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. And.
Can I make a motion then?
Certainly, if you have a ready to make, make a motion, yes, please.
I moved that the board place the proposed amendment regarding the Wetlands Conservation District as presented in amendment memorandum from Kristen Murphy dated December seventeen, two thousand nineteen, on the town two thousand twenty town warrant with a recommendation for adoption.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded it. Any discussion? Uh, call for hand vote, please. Those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any op, thank you, uh, and those in nays or abstentions? None? Unanimous vote? Thank you very much. I think we're down to Gardner House condominiums. Formal bruschnell property.
No, no, go ahead.
We didn't do this much yet.
No, you didn't. It's all right. You're moving right along. And that's what's important.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Seafried, and I am one of the new owners at Twelve Front Street here in Exeter, New Hampshire, and wanted to come and speak with you folks regarding some proposed changes we'd like to make to the exterior building of the new condo building, which will be going in the rear of the property. One thing we'd like to mention is that we are sensitive in keeping everything as is. The scope of the building will remain the same, the footprint will remain the same, same number of units, same intensity of the property. But our main factor in making these changes is that, quite frankly, we don't like the, the initial contemporary design that was designed and approved by you guys before. So what we wanted to do is make three changes. And those three changes consist of the roof line in the front and in the rear of the building, the window style, and as well as the siding on the property. Now, I do not know what siding was initially approved prior, but, um, this is something we wanted to address now as well. So what we are looking to do is we're adding a parapet on the front and the rear of the building. And the reason for that is, one, to break up some of the monotony of the flat roof, and also it provides a little screening to dress up the roof as well. There's another consideration as well on the front. There's a hatch to get up onto the roof that is coming up. And whenever you have a hat, a hatch coming out of the roof through the common area, you need to have safety railing as well. So instead of putting up a four-foot metal bar railing going across the front of the house, we thought the parapet would dress that up a little bit as well. Again, with the windows, again, it's more going with the traditional look versus the contemporary look. We like the look of the double-hung windows. We feel that's more fitting with the architecture that's downtown and fitting more of that traditional look. And as well as the previous windows, we found provide a little bit of an additional challenge for the egress in the bedrooms. Just the way that they're designed and the way that they would open up, being long, narrow windows, it's very difficult for someone if they're needing to exit the window. And then final, uh, finally is the siding and the color of the house. Uh, what we are looking to go with is a vinyl clapboard, which would be yellow. Uh, the goal is, again, the reason we chose the yellow is to match the house in the front, so it wouldn't stand out as much in the back of the property. We feel it's a comparable product, but just with a different look, and it gives it, again, more of a linear and traditional look.
Any question? Is it, any que, Dave, you have some comments? I didn't mean to cut you off, but.
No, just talk about the Julian. It looks like you got, you moved or are you keeping all the, you, you removed some windows from the original design and removed a couple of Julian balconies. Is that correct?
Um, we removed the ones on the first floor. And the reason being, just because the first floor, you have access at floor level.
The Ju, or, okay. All right. Because the north elevation has a, a, used to have one, the middle part of the north elevation used to have two windows, you know, above the, the band.
Yep.
Used to have two windows and two Julian balconies. And you added six windows.
Yep.
So two of the windows are no longer Julian balconies, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make clear that.
But the windows are still there. Windows are the same.
But they.
The number.
No, they added two, they're windows instead of Julian balconies. That's what it is, yeah. Just wanted to be clear on, you know, that, that's what it was. I mean, I didn't say I had an option, just, I mean, an objection to that. I was just pointing that out, that that, when I looked at it, I was like, that's, that's the other modif, slight modification that was made.
Got a couple of things. I, I happened to, I happened to vote against the, the plan last year because I didn't like the building at all.
Okay.
And I do think what you've done is a big improvement for the historic district. If the color of the house matches, it, it, it just fits a little better with the house. You know, it's not perfect, but I think it's better.
Okay.
Inside, you made a couple of changes? That's a question.
Um, I don't know. Did they actually do interior?
Yeah, I, I, you, you had said they, they did not.
Yeah, one. Yeah, one of the issues we had last year was because of the limited parking. These were one-bedroom with an office, and the door to the office was purposely left off and a wider opening was put in. And in the new plan, the doors are back.
Okay. I was not aware of that previous stipulation, so.
That needs to be.
It was reflected in the plan, that's all.
Yeah.
That's why you're not.
Where are we talking, John?
Remember, remember the argument, the discussion we had about, is this a second bedroom or not? And they said, no, it's not, and, and I think Aaron argued this a lot, that we, you know, how can we do this so it wouldn't be used as a bedroom? Because, again, we have limited parking, and that we've given all kinds of other concessions, because there's supposed to be one-bedroom units. And now, if you look at the, at the small plans on the back of the front page, it looks like the doors are back on.
If you look at all the, all the floor plans are shown.
Yeah. And they're not, they're not on this version.
But why not make them just.
Yeah, no, you're right.
So, that changes things.
Right. Because we had asked if there was any, I didn't think there were any interior changes being made.
And I think there's, actually, it, it looks like even some of the walls are moved slightly, you know. What I have for floor plans is, I couldn't find my magnifying glass, but I did spot the doors. It looks like some of the square footage of the rooms has tweaked a little bit, I don't think it changes anything.
No, they've actually, actually been reduced a little bit. The square footage of the units.
Yeah, I guess they have, I think I saw that too, but like I said.
But no, your point's well taken, because they added a door, that was the whole conversation about that. Yeah. Because the back in the, the stairs are in the front of it, right?
Correct.
In the back, that was made to be open to be an office. Now, these are closed like they could be a bedroom.
Okay. Actually, I see a closet as well.
So, would you prefer, you want us to remove the doors on all the offices?
I think they approved the, I, I, I thought you were just making exterior changes.
Yeah, I did as well, I, I mean, again, I was not aware of the previous stipulation with regards to the interior. You know, I mean, what we received were just the footprint, with the drawings for the, for the exterior.
Not only is there no closet.
You don't have these floor plans? Yeah, no, we never received those. So, the only floor plans that we had.
Well, that's sketchy.
Oh, you know what, I am incorrect. I am mistaken, yes, we did.
Yeah, you submitted.
Yes.
You submitted them, I'm looking at them, this is what gave us. This was the approved floor plan, right here.
Yes, no, I am mistaken.
Yeah, we went through that, we talked about it, the foundation-only permit's been added, not a building permit has been issued yet.
Okay.
Just for the foundation, because we were going to get these changes.
Yeah.
But, we had asked that, what are the changes? So, are you good with the existing approved floor plan?
I'm fine with.
Because you can't add a second bedroom to the units.
No, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with removing the door and increasing that opening.
And I guess eliminating the closets as well, because they weren't on the first plans.
Well, they had a closet, but it was like a mechanical closet.
Yeah, there's an air conditioner in there or something.
Water heater.
Water heater, whatever, that, that one's fine.
Or washer and dryer.
Utility, yeah.
You know, because we need a place for the, put the water heaters.
No, I get that, no, I'm okay with that, I'm saying, but there's, I think there was.
Yeah, but that's not it on the third floor, you're not putting a water heater there, are you?
Yeah.
Well, all the units are the same, we've got first floor, second floor, third floor.
It'd be a, there should be a water heater, but, you know, some of them, it's just that, I don't know, the, the unit on the right-hand side, the right end that has that closet, or in the original plan, the other two units didn't have a closet. And they had the wider door opening to discourage anyone from turning that in.
Floor plans. That's first.
It is certainly not a problem removing those doors and making those openings wider, yeah.
Where is your exterior HVAC? Is it going to be on the roof?
Yes.
So, the parapet's going to help kind of hide that.
It's going to hide that, and it's also going to hide the elevator shaft as well, you know, because the elevator shaft needs to come, you know, rise above the roof, you know, the roofline as well. So, it'll help block that out as well, because that's right in the center of the building.
And David, did you say this was sitting a little different on the property, this move?
No, I was, no.
Okay. No, that's fine, that was good.
There was no other site plan, I was asked about, you know, the architectural changes.
Yeah.
I'm fine, you know, the interior changes are.
I think it's.
I, I will, I'll make sure Doug, you know, we get it, so these don't. There was a whole big discussion about parking, because they only provided nine spots, one spot for each. And they were like adamant that it's one bedroom.
Right.
Even though they kind of showed, you know, a room with doors. They didn't show a closet, but now this one's showing a closet. So, this is a two-bedroom, so it would trigger, it would trigger, you know, now you need eighteen parking spots according to zoning.
Okay.
So, we just got to make sure that the floor plans are consistent with.
So, we eliminate the door, we widen the entry?
Yeah, you can't.
And get rid of the closets.
Get rid of the closet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or, you know.
Well, I mean, I was going to say, can we use the closet for mechanical?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Except for mechanical.
I'm not sure that closet there, but I'll leave that up to you, that, where it is, I don't know.
Alright.
You could, it could serve a mechanical, but then you would.
I mean, could we use it for washer and dryer as well?
You already have a washer and dryer. That's in another spot. Where, where this closet appeared.
No, but I'm just thinking about maximizing square footage within the unit, in some of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you just can't create two bedrooms.
Yeah, you know, so if we took it from one area and moved it back into that area.
You could do that.
Okay.
And then that would flip, and it wouldn't be, you go inside to access it, it would be open in the hallway, probably.
Exactly, exactly.
That's what the layout would be.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, we can, we can work with it, just so the intent is, it's a one-bedroom.
Yep.
Stay as one bedroom.
Yeah. So, the first change we'll make is eliminating the doors and widening the openings.
Yep. And either eliminate the closet or use it for your utilities in some fashion.
Yeah, it'll only be used for utilities only.
Yeah, but it might give you more space in the opposite.
Right, in other areas. Because we did lose a little square footage when we went through the final design, with regards to framing and.
What was the, what were the construction materials on the original design, the exterior?
That I don't know, did you know that, Dave?
They, well.
I mean, I thought it was a composite paneling.
Yeah, it was a clap, it was like a hardy, hardy plank clapboard.
That's probably a lot more expensive than vinyl?
Yeah, I mean, one of the reasons we were going with vinyl was just the, you know, from a maintenance level, you know, perspective. And the CertainTeed product, I didn't bring a sample tonight, I wish I had, is a pretty good-looking product.
And I don't usually weigh in on materials used for the outside buildings, but I just, I guess from a, from my own personal perspective, I worry about vinyl just in fire situations, because I know that those materials are so toxic. I mean, God forbid, there should be one, but.
Well, the building will be sprinkled.
Right, but the outside of it.
Okay.
I don't know, and I, I don't know enough about it to even make a big deal about that, but I'm not a huge fan of vinyl siding for that reason, and just for aesthetics, I like, like some of the other composite materials that, like the cement, and that's probably very expensive. I don't know. I know Riverwoods, and I don't, you know what, what you're, the, the buildings at Riverwoods seem to hold up nicely, and they're not vinyl.
They're not vinyl.
They're not vinyl. But I don't know what they are, they always.
I don't either.
They don't seem to require a lot of maintenance, they always look.
No, they're, they're, well, see, there's a, potentially a difference between a cottage and the, and the big house.
The big house, I'm thinking kind of your big house.
Pete, are you in the big house yet?
No.
Yeah, I, I don't love the vinyl siding either. I just, I don't know, I feel like downtown, like in this location, there's not a lot of, I don't know if there's a lot of vinyl siding.
Those.
The materials.
I think those new houses across the park, parking lot are.
Oh, are they?
I think so, yeah, because I wondered about those.
The white ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I've seen that, I was surprised.
Oh, yeah, that's all vinyl.
Well, they're not in the historic district.
No, no.
So, if it's in the historic district, vinyl's not allowed, is that what you just said? So, this is in the historic district?
No.
No. The front building is.
The back part is not, the front part is.
Lower forty is not.
So, I had a question about the color, is the color, you're representing it as kind of a pale yellow, is, is it, is the intent that it's going to match the yellow?
Yes.
Okay. I think, I remember having a conversation about how we didn't want to match the front building, that we wanted it to be completely different. Do, does anyone remember this?
I do remember.
I didn't.
I didn't think about it until you said it, but I remember it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, I don't have a huge, like, I don't really have a big opinion about it, but I'm just wondering if that's something.
It seems like that was something we talked about on the site walk.
Yeah, I'd almost rather see it be like a gray or something. Something that contrasts, I worry a little bit about that, too.
I, I could go either way with that, but I think if you have it yellow and it looks like it matches and it's vinyl, then that looks kind of, yeah.
Yeah, it looks like you're trying to reproduce something, but you're using a cheaper, modern material, and then you've got like the modern floor. And it seems confusing, like, I think the reason that we, it was like, you know, very modern was to make it just completely different. And I think we probably want to, we had a lot of conversations in sight walks, and the architects went back and forth with us, and, you know, the, the black band on the bottom was to try to make it look more horizontal. There, there was a lot that went into that, so I just want to make sure we don't, we don't lose it completely, and. Yeah, I don't know, personally, I think that contrasting colors helps sort of differentiate it, that's something different.
That's true, though, I, I do agree that I kind of like this new picture a little better, with the different windows, and that's a safety feature, I think, so. But, yeah, I still take your point about the different, not trying to match.
Well, the lo, the first floor, because it has that band, could be something different, dark, a different color.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be, I just, I, I just think maybe not yellow, I think maybe something.
Is the material siding you're talking about, could you describe that to us? It's not the typical clapboard-type vinyl siding, is it?
No, it's not, it's, it's a product made by CertainTeed, and it's, you know, where vinyl is more of a flat texture. This has the ridges in it, so it gives you that rippled look, like the clapboard would. So, that's sort of the look that we were going to go with.
When you said, can I ask you a question, because you said about maintenance. Have you done, have you done any cement, cement board siding? I mean, I used it on my house, I mean, talk about maintenance-free, I mean, that stuff is, that's not going anywhere. I mean, fifty-year warranty on it, it doesn't bend, it doesn't warp, the only, the only issues with it is if you can chip it. So, if you, you know, you throw a baseball hard against it, you chip it, and then you got to replace the panel, you know, like where wood would just kind of dent. This can chip or crack, I, I've had it for, you know, I've never chipped it or cracked it, but it's really good, you know, really good product.
You need, you need to be careful how you install it, though. You know, if you cut it, then you've got to paint that in before you put it in the house.
Yeah, and then you know.
Once it gets in there, it'll get, it'll, that stuff will expand, you have to be.
Yeah, it expands and contracts, there's butt joints, you know.
Well, I know, but when you butt them, you better paint the end of that if you've cut it.
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't had any issues, I mean, yeah, there's some application.
Yeah, when you do it, do it right the first time.
Because you had mentioned, I did it for a maintenance issue, I'm like, that, that's, stuff's known, I mean, it's cement. It's just, you know, painted cement, but it is a little bit more labor-intensive. It is, it is a little higher price.
Initial installation is higher, but it's. The condo association would love you.
Any other questions or comments? I, I think it's an improvement, gets closer to, I think, what we were talking about, when we're in the driveway freezing. Trying to show architectural features of the town to the architect? I'd be willing to hear a motion. And David, you've got one at the bottom of your note paper?
I did provide one, yeah.
If we're ready, I'm ready. Comfortable with that, John?
Yeah, I, I'll move that the request of Gardner House Condominiums LLC, in parentheses, FKA and C. Bushnell Two Thousand and Four Trust, planning board case number eighteen dash twelve, for the changes, for changes to the architectural design of the building as presented be approved, but also that the.
With the condition?
With the condition that the, the, the interior changes made on that plan are returned to, and how to word this, that are. What was prior approved, that the interior changes go back to what was prior, prior approved. Previously approved, I'm sorry.
I gave you that.
You gave me that, you did. And we did that, I think, in January twenty-fourth of two thousand nineteen.
Second. Move and second it.
Just so I'm clear on that, it says go back to, it almost indicates that, you know, it's exactly the floor plan, but it's more the intent.
The intent of, if you'd like, the intent of having it a one-bedroom unit with the second room designated as an office with no door, with a wider opening, and no closets.
Yeah, okay. So, you can go from a hundred and twenty-square-foot room to a hundred and ten and add that ten feet somewhere else and maneuver things a little bit, but the intent, gotcha.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect.
So, can we add the condition about changing the color, or is, is no one else?
Not to my motion.
Okay, we have a.
Is anyone else, like, in agreement on that, or should I?
I like it the way it is, being proposed.
Anyone second it?
I did.
Yes, we got a second, so, let's vote by raising our right hand, please, those in favor indicate by raising the right hand. And those opposed? Five yes, two no. Motion passes, or carries.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for making the improvements. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe he'll sell the property and somebody else will come over. All right. Historic District Commission Representative. Gwen, are you going to follow up your plan of continuing on commission, RPC, and? Okay, you are so appointed.
How do we go? Peter has, has volunteered to be.
I can appoint him to take.
As an alternate, RPC.
And, yeah, an ultimate. Yeah, that's, yeah, because we do have a space to open on there, so, Peter, I'll appoint you to be an alternate RPC. And we'll go from there. Master plan discussion.
Well, we have to, Pete, do you know when we have a next scheduled meeting?
No.
I had.
You said the seventeen.
I did, but I'd like, I'd like to do a meeting next week.
For what?
I would like to have a meeting next week that we could go over to Lincoln Street.
Well, yeah, we have to.
Meet right there, but I'd rather do it on Thursday if we could, Thursday morning, Thursday.
Thursday.
Instead of Friday, this, Thursday, the sixteenth.
Why don't you talk to Chairman Brown?
Hey, we got, we're just two of us to vote.
He has to go along with us.
I missed, I missed a meeting, and you pointed me another committee. Least we could do is just schedule a meeting.
I missed both, too.
Okay.
Because I had to take my wife to the airport.
On Thursday?
No, 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 that other meeting I missed.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to go back and get her?
No.
So let's, tentatively, we'll see if Aaron can make it, but two of us, and then anyone else. David decided to leave.
Either of those two days is all right.
Okay. But if David can arrange something that we can.
He's coming to get his calendar, see what looks good.
Yeah. That we can meet there at eight o'clock and.
How's your calendar?
This Thursday, next Thursday work for you?
Sixteenth?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah?
Okay, eight o'clock, at the site.
Kind of heat, you're going to meet at Trackside?
Oh, we're off the MPOC. Okay, we'll figure when that was out, when that was. We're on to a site walk for,
well, to do.
Lincoln Street.
Yeah, Lincoln Street, so we can kind of start together. It gives you a week to maybe.
Yeah.
Make a few maps for us and.
Yeah.
So you won't get lost.
You can start Trackside with coffee, so everybody knows what you're talking about.
There you go.
Okay, any field modifications or anything, Mr. Planner?
Uh, well, I, I had one that, that I couldn't approve, that was this one, that, and I mentioned it to you, and I got another one I didn't approve, so you'll be seeing that one.
Okay.
As well. Unless they just build it to plan, but they asked to change it, and I wasn't, I don't have the authority to do it, but you may see them. So I got one submitted, but it was kicked back, so they have the choice of coming to you or just building it to plan.
Okay.
Are you allowed to approve modifications for a fourth floor?
No.
Because that would save us a lot of work.
No, not if it was, if it equated a variance. You can change the dimensions of a building if they came in and, you know, it would be a case by case basis, they could add, you know, first or second story or a third story if they met zoning. But probably not, because if they add a floor, then they'd trigger parking requirements and so forth, so in theory I could, but I can't imagine a scenario that I would.
Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
What are we going to do with the minutes?
Oh, we got minutes to approve, thank you. We have minutes we're supposed to start with.
I can't find them.
They're right here.
No, 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 but I can't find the ones to buy notes on it.
Oh, well, they're right there in the same file. Minutes of January twenty fourth. I apologize, we moved to the minutes.
January twenty fourth?
Twenty fourth?
December nineteenth.
December nineteenth?
He's trying to confuse.
Wow.
I'm just looking at what's in front of me. That does say January twenty fourth on it, doesn't it?
Yeah, nineteen, too, that's the one.
That was a year ago.
That goes to that case.
That we just talked about, that was for our reference.
Maybe we should.
And just a quick reminder, we did.
Oh, here they are, the nineteen.
We also have to approve the December twelfth minutes.
Yes, and that's not on the agenda tonight, so.
So we're not doing it.
We're not going to do that, unless everybody has them and they're ready to go with them.
Let's see how long the December nineteenth takes.
Okay. December nineteenth is on the table. And I do have the right one, see, December nineteenth, okay? All right, good.
Twenty nineteen.
Yes. Peter, go ahead.
I think I just have a couple comments. I do want to say that I feel like these were excellent minutes. It really summarized the meeting very well. Line three eighty-six, where we said page four has changes including in perpetuity. I think what was missing for me was that Dave was going to look into what happens when the site is redeveloped to another use, and what happens with the deed, so I didn't see that comment in here, so I thought that probably should be added. Just about deed restrictions on affordable housing, what happens two hundred years down the road when the use changes, you said you were going to look into that.
I will look into it, I'll be dead. Oh, right, I thought you were saying a hundred years from now, I'll look into it.
You'll be retired anyway.
Yeah, no, well, you changed it to in perpetuity. I mean, it runs with the land unless it gets redeveloped. As long as the site, I did, as long as the site plan remains valid, that condition carries.
Okay. I just say that we hadn't circled back on that.
Yeah.
And that that was part of the discussion that wasn't captured in here, so that was.
Oh, okay, all right. I get you.
I'm sorry, Pete, where are we?
That was on line three eighty-six.
Three eighty-six. Oh, okay.
And then I think there probably ought to be a header, like there is. Maybe not.
The heading on three seventy-nine is wrong.
Yeah, like between three ninety-four and three ninety-six, I think we shift from the mutton to the wetland conservation amendment, and I didn't seem like there should be a header.
The three seventy-nine should be the mutton.
Well, that was a problem I had with the header on three seventy-nine.
Okay, yeah, I didn't catch that one, but it's a good catch.
It was the same issue. Because the material that follows three eighty-one doesn't have anything to do with the wetland ordinance.
Right. So maybe it's just moving that header to three ninety-five.
Yep.
That's probably it, yep. It'll fit right in there, because it's a blank line.
Yep. And then I guess, I think we already talked about this tonight, but on line four oh five, just to be a little more clear about me being designated as an alternate for the regional planning, or Rockingham Planning Commission, which wasn't really clear as stated there, so. That was it for me.
Are you the appointing authority to that? That's not the select board, the RPC, you don't make a recommendation? Are you the appointing authority?
Well, I recommend them, but I.
Oh, I don't know, I'm just asking, I got to check your rules of procedure, but we haven't really had any, Gwen's been, since I've been here.
Their board appointments, I think.
The select board has to.
Generally, that's how it works with appointments, the planning board recommends, and then the select board appoints.
Okay.
Let me check into that, and, you know, if it's a recommend, if it's an appointment, it's a straight appointment, because I'd have to check into the rules of the RPC and our rules of procedure.
All right, yep.
Because we just haven't dealt with it yet. You've been on, I think, the RPC since I've been here, so, right? Yeah. So we have, yeah, so we even had that, so I'll find out who the appointing authority is, and I, we might have to just send it over to, you know, I'll send it over to the select board to make it official.
You understand, understand the intent of the chairperson? Yes, thank you.
All right, we got it. I'll look into that tomorrow.
Putting good people to good work. Anything else on the minutes?
Oh, yes.
Gwen, whoops.
Please.
Go ahead, Peter.
Oh.
No, I'm still, I'm still trying to.
He's trying to find them.
Find the rules, the procedure, where, where that's at, so go ahead, Gwen.
On line sixty-three.
Sixty-three?
I would almost eliminate the, not the entire site. It just, it's kind of a confusing sentence, and the point of the sentence is really that the trees of sixteen inch caliper were identified on the area to be cleared. I don't know that you need not the entire site, just as a sort of confusing sentence.
Okay, so.
On line sixty-seven. Mr. Ring requested to respond to the most recent comments as a condition of approval. I don't understand what that sentence means. Sixty-seven?
Oh.
I think I, I think I sort of understood.
That was in response to the UEI comments. Because generally, we get a first review by UEI.
Okay.
And they respond, and then UEI responds to their responses. And then sometimes there's a little bit, you know, just minor details, and we write a letter that we make it a condition of approval, that, you know, we address all outstanding, you know, UEI comments, dissatisfaction, and that's what he responded. He's like, I request to respond to the most recent comments when UEI is a condition of.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
For your information, kind of thing, yeah.
I just put in the UEI.
Line, this is a simple one, but just on lines seventy-two and seventy-three. Maybe end the sentence on seventy-two. End it at snow storage areas, period, and then say if necessary, snow would be trucked off site. The way it's written, the snow storage areas would be trucked off site.
There weren't supposed to be the trucks in there.
That's a lot of. Okay. Just a couple. Daniel, these really were excellent notes, by the way.
Yes.
Just a simple one, two eighty-eight, line two eighty-eight. Probably change the impact at the end of the sentence, impact to impacts, plural, just make it plural. Line three oh one, capitalize the spruce, the S in spruce, Spruce Street. That's at the end of the sentence. Does that make sense?
I guess I, what I said for three fifty-six was that I agreed with the interpretation of the the gentle Mr. Michael Laham and their interpretation of the ten thousand square feet four as directed by the TRC.
That's better.
Yeah.
On three eighty-nine, I think, I think that was the, I don't know. Maybe just say and discuss concrete and other finishes, but not asphalt.
Three eighty-nine?
Three eighty-nine.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Anything else?
I wasn't paying attention, John, did you do the one on three thirty-nine?
No.
Yeah, we talked about moving that to the.
Mr. Fay noted he, Mr. Falzone. He and Mr. Falzone have, or that Mr. Falzone, but he is, I'm concerned with the, I don't know what he means in that.
Probably just eliminate.
Context, I think it just strike it. Now, going back to three eighteen. I didn't realize that Mr. Latimer was of Beals Associates. Maybe I I thought they were on opposite sides of the. Latimer, was he from Beals Associates?
Was he the engineer who?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Latimer, here, two eighty-six.
No, I, no.
What?
I don't believe he's.
I don't think he's.
That would be sort of strange.
Because he was independent.
Oh, Beals is doing the plans.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, no, 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 no. No, he's not, he's not. He's from down in Mass, I don't, I don't know if he said what firm or.
Yeah, but Latimer is Hummel's engineer.
Understood, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, he's not Beals, he's not.
So he's, his name should be struck there.
Beals Associates.
Just Beals Associates, just strike that.
Now, I, I need to go back to one oh five, one oh six, and one oh seven. Which, this was talking where, Jen, you were concerned with the white stone and what Volvo was required. What white, what Volvo was requiring. Now, and next thing, noted he would speak with them. Now, do we know what that ultimate result was?
Yeah.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay. Then the next one is down at one twenty, one twenty-one. Was the lease, excuse me, the easement. And I, he would was willing to investigate the easement deed first. Do we know that that happened?
Uh, no, not yet, it was a condition of approval.
Yeah, okay, that's how I.
Yeah, I mean, they, they haven't come in, they haven't.
All right.
Gonna ask for a pre-con meeting or.
Then going all the way over to oh. Three thirteen.
Oh, you're flipping right along here.
Well, yes. Mr. Falzone indicated he went to the DPW and did not receive the letter in advance of the hearing. He was not copied, and it is not fair or reasonable. Is that what was it? Was that the exchange?
Yeah, that's what he said.
I think it was, but I couldn't.
Yeah.
Okay, then that's, we won't worry about that one. And that's it. Other than, I think, I think the comment on line four twenty-six is actually quite meaningful. Via Exeter TV.
Oh, I see.
Now, I could move to, did we go home?
No, you can move to, second please.
Oh, I will do that.
The minutes as modified, or as noted, or whatever.
Yep.
Move to second, and those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Good. Let's have, for note, Dan, that on our next meeting, we work on the minutes of December twelve. Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve. Please, on the next agenda. Yeah. Okay. I was looking for a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, good.
A second.
And those in favor, let's go.
Aye.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.